Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the second of three city council candidate forum sponsored by the Missoula Neighborhoods and the League of Women Voters of Missoula. As usual, I'll ask the live audience to please silence your phones. My name is Jeff Badnok and I am a member of the Board of the League of Women Voters. In the spirit of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I would like to begin this forum by reading the League of Women Voters' Land Acknowledgement Statement. The League of Women Voters of Missoula acknowledges that we gather on the traditional lands of the Salish, Kootenai, Kalispel, Pondure, Blackfeet, Cheshone tribes. The voting rights of these native peoples were not secured until the 1960s, forty years after the Nineteenth Amendment secured the right to vote for some women. The League is committed to protecting equal access to voting and resisting efforts to disenfranchise. I'd like to thank Kalina Pritchard and Melissa Gluckert of the Missoula Neighborhood Councils for coordinating this forum, our League of Women Voters volunteers, and our student volunteers from the U M Political Science Honors Society, Pi Sigma Alpha, for helping tonight. Finally, I'd like to thank our candidates for their willingness to serve Missoula and for participating in tonight's forum. Tonight's forum features candidates from Ward Two and Three. Ward Two includes Captain John Mullin area, Grant Creek, and North Missoula. Ward Two voters are electing two city council members for candidates for a four-year term are Murtha Becerra and Rebecca Dawson, who unfortunately is unable to be with us tonight. Ms. Becerra is the incumbent council member. Additionally, Sierra Farmer and Timothy Garrison are running for a two-year seat from Ward Two to finish the term of council member Jordan Hess, who resigned to become mayor. Ms. Furmer is the incumbent. Ward Three covers the riverfront area, Rose Park, and the University District. The candidates are Sam Kula and Gwen Jones. Ms. Jones is the incumbent. This forum follows a nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format established by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan, nonprofit membership organization. We never support candidates or political parties. The purpose of this forum is to give Missoula voters an opportunity to submit written questions to the candidates and hear the candidates' responses. Audience members may write a question on the cards provided, and we will collect them during the format or the forum to be asked. People also have the opportunity to submit questions to the Missoula Neighborhood's website by noon today. The questions will be screened for duplicates and duplication, and candidates will be asked as many questions as time permits. There may not be enough time to ask all the questions submitted. All candidates will answer each question. Each candidate will have the same amount of time to respond. The responses will be strictly timed to ensure fairness. The order candidates respond will rotate, so each candidate will have an opportunity to speak first and last. Just before this evening's forum, we randomly drew candidates' names to determine the speaking order. We will start with the opening statements, and then have questions, and then end with closing statements. We will begin with two-minute opening statements from our candidates. The speaking order which we will start with and rotate throughout tonight is Timothy Garrison, Sierra Farmer, Murtha Becerra, Sam Kula, and finally Gwen Jones. So we'll ask Timothy to please begin with your opening statement of two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Timothy Garrison. I'm running for the two-year open for Ward Two for City Council. I'm retired Marine. I served twenty-eight years in the Marine Corps, and I'm a fifth-generation Montanan. My son lives here in Missoula. My grandchildren live here in Missoula. I have two daughters. I have two granddaughters. And so being active in making or helping with the decisions of the future of the city and which direction we're going in is something that's important to me. I also have served for the last year or so, a little over a year, on the Northside-Westside Neighborhood Leadership Team and was chair of that team last year. So I see a lot of the issues, I hear a lot of the issues from the neighborhood, from that area that comes to us. Some of those issues are not within our privy to deal with, and I think that we could help and assist more with those issues if I was on City Council. Additionally, we have, the Westside runs all the way out to Reserve Street, and there's lots of issues out on Reserve Street with traffic and everything else. So I hope to assist in trying to bring some solutions forward in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Sierra.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I appreciate it. Yeah, so my name is Sierra Farmer, and I am running to retain my seat in Ward Two. I grew up in Missoula County specifically. I spent a lot of time on the Westside as a child, and I've seen a lot of changes in that neighborhood. I am raising my two kids here in Missoula. They both go to Lowell School, and I'm a U of M alum both for my undergrad and my masters. And I work at the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation as my day job. I spent almost a year on the planning board prior to being on City Council, and that's where I really got the first taste of City Council and serving. And this last year has been so eye-opening and so interesting to be on council. I've learned so much. And I'm really excited about all the things that are coming forward and that we're going to be working on, and I really want to be at the table when these decisions are being made because I care so much about my community and I want to serve it and make good decisions and guide us, you know, on the right path. I think that, you know, my leadership style is really that I like to listen to everyone and bring the right people together. I actually kind of despise this part of it. I think yesterday I maybe broke out in a rash at the last forum because I was so uncomfortable being in front of people, but I really like bringing people together, listening to your concerns, and finding solutions that work for everyone, and I hope to continue to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Murtha?
Thank you. Thank you again for putting this forum together, and thank you to everyone here for your interest and your commitment to being informed voters. My name is Mierta Becerra, and I have been, I'm a native of Chile, but I have called Missoula home for more than twenty years. For ten years, I worked as a land use and transportation planner, both for the city of Missoula and Missoula County. I have a master's in urban planning from the State University of New York. I lived here as a young professional, then I got married. I have two kids. Both of them were born here in Missoula. I was appointed to council, and then I had to run for my seat. And here I am again, four years later, still committed to my community, committed to my ward. I want to continue to be on council for many reasons, but primarily because I think Ward Two has seen a significant amount of growth. I believe my area of professional expertise is an asset to City Council, and it allows me to communicate with my constituents in a way that they can better understand and participate in some of these changes that are happening in Missoula and specifically in Ward Two. I want to continue to be on council so that I can, in a collaborative way, find solutions to the really challenging issues that we're facing, primarily housing and houselessness, traffic, property taxes. These are all things that I hope to be at the table and collaborate with many different organizations in the community so together we can find solutions. The one thing I have learned all these years on council is that alone we cannot do much, but together we can accomplish significant amount of work. Thanks.
Thank you. Sam?
Thanks, Gwen. Check, check. Okay, I'm gonna start now. Wow, it's loud. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for being here. My name is Sam Kula, and I'm here to represent the people of Ward Three. I know that a lot of people have seen the changes that our city is undergoing, and I want to be your advocate on the City Council to make sure that these changes work for all of us. Responsive government is really at the heart of my mission, and I've spent months talking to folks in our community, knocking on doors, listening to concerns about the future. Missoulians are yearning for meaningful change, and I'm here to answer that call. Your voice matters, and I'm committed to listening to your needs and ideas and aspirations. We need representation that truly reflects the diverse voices of our community. One of the pressing issues we face is affordable housing. Housing should be a right, not a luxury. I believe in practical policies that can make a real difference. I've witnessed firsthand the struggles of renters like myself, who are trying to buy a home while working multiple jobs. Our city needs to take concrete steps to increase the commitment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in perpetuity. This commitment's vital in creating a community that is truly affordable for all. I also really believe that for Missoula to thrive, we've got to address homelessness head-on. We've got to provide a safe and secure space for those who are unhoused, and it's not only a moral imperative, but also an investment in the health and well-being of our entire community. Excuse me. It's time that we implement temporary organized, regulated urban campsites, which not only adhere to the legal standards, but they provide the necessary services to help our neighbors transition out of homelessness. We're at a crossroads here, and Missoula's changing. The needs and concerns of our residents are evolving. My predecessor, whom I respect deeply, has done her part, but we must do a better job at adapting to these new challenges. It's time for fresh ideas, better listening, and an innovative approach to address both new and ongoing issues. We need representation that shows an understanding firsthand of the struggles of Missoulians, whether it's working a job to make ends meet or finding an affordable place to call home. Our shared goal is to build a Missoula that includes everybody, where all voices are heard, respected, and represented. Together, we can create a stronger and more inclusive community, so I want to work collaboratively to achieve this vision. Thanks for joining me on this journey, and I look forward to hearing all your thoughts and concerns and ideas for Missoula.
Thank you. Gwen?
Do you turn it off?
All right. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Gwen Jones. I'm the current representative for Ward Three on City Council, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and for everybody who came out on this dark autumn evening. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Missoula, and I've had the pleasure of raising my three kids here for the last twenty years. My husband and I were out of state, and we moved back twenty years ago. So I grew up in the same ward that I represent, and it's really fun knowing different generations and having those deep roots. I'm an attorney, and I practice law over the years, and I enjoy bringing those skills to council. We are making law. We are crafting policy. And a lot of times, people are like, Gwen, what does this legal opinion mean? And I'm like, ask the city attorney or read the conclusion, honestly. But it's been a good skill set to have because really on council, you're communicating, you're thinking abstractly, you're trying to look at policy from all different angles to find out what kind of good consequences or unintended consequences you're going to create by having put something forth. While I've been on council, I have chaired numerous different committees. I was vice president for four years under Brian Von Losberg, who was a president, and then for the last two years, I have been the president of council. While Mayor Engen was very ill, I handled a lot of things and then was interim mayor for four weeks. I've worked on different legislation, and I'll speak to this later on, but honestly, I think counselors lean in and work on implementing a lot of our policies. Creating the policy is really the first ten to twenty percent of it. It's implementing it then, when we really make change. So I collaboratively work with people and lean in to try and get those things done. So thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. We'll now begin the question part of the forum. We have rotated the order as we indicated we would, and our first question will go to Murtha, and Gwen, you'll follow up on this. First question is, what has your participation in local government, either as an office holder or otherwise, taught you about leadership and citizen engagement?
That's a great question. I mentioned this at the previous forum last night. I am a child of a country with a history of dictatorship, and I don't take lightly the fact that we can vote, that we can participate in democracy, and it's one of the reasons that moved me to be in public office. So what I have learned is that everyone's voice matters, and who you elect to carry your voice matters. I participate by being present. I attend as many meetings as I can. I answer emails on a daily basis, and I try as hard as I can to have an open communication, a line of communication with my constituents. So that's how I see public service, and that's how I see my role on City Council in representing my constituents and balancing the needs of my ward with that of the community at large.
Thank you. And then we'll hear from Gwen and Sam. You'll be on deck.
Great. To follow up on what Mierta said, I also spend a lot of time answering phone calls, emailing with constituents, all of that to try and provide as much communication as possible, but we always need more communication. There's no way around it. But I think a big part of our job in terms of leadership and being on council is on any one topic, figuring out who the stakeholders are that we should be talking to, making sure we're looping in staff, and really getting that expertise that they can provide. And then ultimately, there has to be some level of mandate from the community, and that might mean going out and trying to provide information and bring people up to speed on an issue that may not be in front of them yet. But we have to maintain those connections to have that mandate to ultimately have a good result in the long run, or else it's going to backfire on us, and we're not going to wind up where we want to be. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Sam, you're up next, and Tim, you'll be next after this.
All right. It's an important question. So one of the best characteristics of a leader, in my opinion, is that leaders listen for the answers from within their community, and that can come in a lot of different ways. That could come by emailing phones and, tell you what, since I've been running, the email and the phones have been blowing up, and I've been answering everything within twenty-four hours because that's what you got to do so people don't feel like they're getting lost. I hope I could keep that base if, when elected. Citizens only really want to engage, and I say this from personal experience, citizens only really want to engage with government when the door is open, and if they feel that closed door, they don't feel represented, and they don't trust the leaders even if the leaders are acting in good faith. And so it's really important for me that we have that open communication and responsive government at every level, and this is a level where we can make that change most effectively as Missoulians. We need to improve that connection through all sorts of outreach things, be they, you know, meetings, podcasts, Zoom meetings, whatever, but that's how we're going to keep people on board and believing in what City Council can do.
Okay. Thank you. Tim, you're next, and Sierra, you'll be next.
Yes, as a member of the leadership team for the Northside-Westside Neighborhood, reaching out to and engaging with not only the neighbors that live in the area, but also those service providers and organizations that are operating in the area and the businesses in the area. I also make liaison with the Reserve Street group that is trying to improve the safety up there on Reserve Street. As a member of the Veterans Service Committee, I interact with the veterans. I interact with representatives from the offices of Senator Dane, Senator Tester, and Representative Zinke. A lot of the issues out there, if you don't reach out and talk to other people at different levels of government, then you don't know all the issues that exist. So it's about communicating with those individuals, with our representatives that we sent off to Helena to represent us. So engaging with them and interacting and getting the real down to the ground of what are the issues within the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Sierra.
Yeah, thank you. This year on council, this has been one of the things that has been really surprising to me is sometimes it is extremely hard to find information for our constituents, and it's not because we're trying to bury this information, it's just that it's not something that government generally does very well, is communicating what's happening within the city. And that's something that I would really love to improve upon, is making what we're, the decisions we're making on council be more readily accessible. And I think that we can do that through a lot of ways. We can do that by improving our website, improving our social media accounts, and also I think that we also have to reach out to the community quite a bit. I've been on the PTA of Lowell, and I think that if you want to know what's happening in your community, talk to moms because we know what's going on. And so I think that would be something that I would really want to improve upon in the next two years, is increase our communication so that citizens know what is happening and feel safe and comfortable to come to council and let their voice be heard.
Thank you. Our next question is going to drill down a little bit on that question, and we'll start with Sam. And the question is, how do you plan to engage and collaborate with underrepresented, unrepresented communities to ensure their voices are heard in city decision-making processes?
All right, I got the button this time. So that's a really important question because no matter how loud your voice is, if you live here, you're a Missoulian. And so in order to make sure that underrepresented communities are engaged, appropriately represented, I'm going to hold meetings. I'm going to make sure that I make time in my schedule to meet with folks in person as well as in other ways if they're not able to meet in person. You know, that could be like a Zoom party, a Zoom listening party, where people get together and have the ideas they want to share and share them in a respectful way. And I'll also do that through making sure that I'm explaining my decisions and my motivations well enough that people can come at me if they don't agree with what I'm saying in a way that provides avenues for discourse, you know? Everybody needs to have their voice heard in this town, and it's a lot easier for some people than others to make that happen. And so once I'm in here, if I'm so lucky to be elected by the people of Missoula, I'm going to make time for everybody.
Thank you. Gwen?
I think it's a great question, and it's something that we're constantly tussling with on council, is how to do outreach, how to communicate. We've seen the last eight years, all these communication modes change, and now everything is different from the way it was ten or twenty years ago in terms of our newspaper, our media, all of this. So getting that information out is always a challenge, and I'm happy that the city is always looking at new and different ways to do it. But I also think sometimes you have to meet people where they are at. And what I have found to be very fruitful over the years is going to meetings. I get invited to a lot of stuff, and I see invitations for other things everywhere, like posted. Going to meetings and just showing up, hearing what they have to say, asking how I can be of help. Honestly, that has been the most straightforward way to engage that I've found, but it is an ongoing process that we have to keep working on.
Thank you. Sierra, and Tim, you're on deck.
Yeah, thanks. I think first for underrepresented communities, they have to know that they, they have to feel safe and welcome to be able to come forward, and I think that that is something I value a lot, is making sure that everyone's voice can be heard and everyone feels safe coming forward. I think what, something that I bring to the table is that I welcome conversations with everyone. I don't have to agree with you to have a conversation with you, and I think that that's really important, is that so often we get kind of stuck in, if you don't agree with me, then we can't have a conversation. And that's not the way I approach listening to my constituents at all. I think the other thing that I've learned quite a bit is a lot of people don't feel comfortable coming into city council chambers, and so a lot of times you just need to meet one-on-one with people and have conversations over a cup of coffee or just on the phone. And a lot of times, people feel a lot, they can feel a lot more value that way than having to come in here in front of all of us. So I think that's how I would continue to do it.
Thank you. Tim, and then we'll hear from Murtha.
Yes, again, as part of the Neighborhood Committee, we reach out to those new building, those new structures that are coming up, the Vlogio, that type, where the larger neighborhoods are, large amount of population is moving into the neighborhood, and we reach out to those property managers, and we invite them to nominate a representative and come over to our Neighborhood Committee, meet with our Neighborhood Committee so that they have somebody, sort of a dog in the fight, they have a voice in our neighborhood. They may not know that Neighborhood Committee even exists. They're new to the neighborhood, so we reach out to them, and we reach out to the masses through the property managers. Other ways is just being involved in the social media side of Missoula. There's a lot of programs out there, there's a lot of organizations out there within our neighborhoods, and they exist. It's up to us sometimes to find them and to reach out to them and begin those conversations with them because, again, they don't always know that we exist. City Council, they know we exist, but it's still about reaching out to them and inviting them.
Thank you. Murtha?
Thank you. I think that going to meet our constituents where they are is key, and I sometimes invite myself to a lot of the HOA meetings and meetings that some of them are engaged in just so that I can bring information, but also gather information. I've been known to attend meetings with the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, principals at different schools, developers and builders in town, bus drivers. I think it's really important to also use whatever mode of communication is the most effective for whatever group you're talking to. So I answer my phone, I answer emails, but I've been known to write postcards and send a letter to different constituents just so that we can have that communication in whatever form is easiest for everyone. But I think it's really important to be open to that and meet them where they're at.
Thank you. Before we go into the next question, just to remind you, if for some reason you, over the evening, lose track of where we are, please feel free to ask the question to be repeated. This isn't, we're trying to trap you, so if you need the question repeated, please ask for it. We'll start this next round. We'll start with Sierra, and the question is, oh, and with Tim, you'll be following. Please explain how you will best use your time in service to the community and balance this with your other commitments.
That's a really good question, and that's one of the, that was one of the most shocking things, I think, in this year on council, was the amount of time that is, it does take to be on council, and it is, it's a balancing act. You know, I do work full-time and I'm raising a family, but I think it's so important to me that I'm willing to carve out that time from my family and from my day job to make sure that we're making good decisions. So the way that I would do it is the way I've continued to do it, is I carve out all day Wednesday for subcommittees and every Monday night, and then I'm also taking phone calls and coffee dates and sending emails well into the night. I'm sure a lot of my constituents have gotten emails from me at eleven o'clock at night because sometimes that's the only time I have a chance to respond. So I think that I've already done it, and I'm going to continue doing it the same way, but it is, it is a huge balancing act, but I'm willing to do it.
Thank you. Tim, and we'll be followed by Murtha.
I think I'm in a unique situation where I am retired military, and so I do have time to give back. I give back already to the scouts, the youth organizations in the city and in the area, this area of Montana. Volunteer with eight different scout units and lead and support those units. So giving back time, carving out time, is not necessarily a concern or an issue. I have the time to give, and I'm ready to dedicate that time to that. Thank you.
Great. Murtha and Gwen will follow.
I sit on a number of boards and committees, and I am fortunate that I can dedicate that much time to City Council. I have had several part-time jobs here and there, kind of a Missoula couple-together existence, and that has allowed me to commit time to City Council, and that's how I will envision continuing to do that work, is by attending all the meetings that I can, meeting with my constituents, and always carving out some time to attend to my family. Thanks.
Thank you. Gwen, followed by Sam.
Sure. When I first ran for council in 2015 and got on council, I had three kids still at home and a very old dog, and I was practicing law, writing appeals part-time. All of my kids are out of the house. I actually have a twenty-six-year-old who's now back, going to the U of M for a grad degree, who lives in the basement, so he's back, but certainly not a toddler anymore. Life is easier. And I still practice law, but it's less and less as I kind of look at retiring from that. So I am lucky that I'm in a position where I do have time to put into this job. Being a vice president or president of council is a lot of extra work. There's no way around it. And last year, when Mayor Engen was ill, I was not only president of council, but if you're president of council, you serve as interim mayor if he couldn't sign anything or handle anything. So I was in a very lucky situation to be able to dedicate forty, fifty hours a week to council. And I still practice law, but it's less and less as I kind of look at retiring from that. So I am lucky that I'm in a position where I do have time to put into this job. Being a vice president or president of council is a lot of extra work. There's no way around it. And last year when Mayor Engen was ill, I was not only president of council, but if you're president of council, you serve as interim mayor. If he couldn't sign anything or handle anything. So I was in a very lucky situation to be able to dedicate 40, 50 hours a week to council. And still do.
Thank you. Sam?
That's a really great question, and it's something that I'm already doing, is balancing a lot of different schedule commitments. As somebody who works, you know, give or take three jobs at any given time, I make it a point to choose commitments where I have a lot of flexibility in my schedule so that I can make everything fit. A few of my commitments that are pretty flexible, and I will move around to make fit city council are, one, I'm an online international high school teacher. One of the benefits of doing that is that I can set my class schedule. So if I kind of know when meetings regularly happen, simply won't put classes then. Another job that I do on the regular is I own a small business, where I do B2B tech installs throughout the region. Again, I set the schedule, I show up when I have time, and if I don't have time, I don't show up. The other thing that I do is I, maybe two or three times a year, I sail with the University of National Research Fleet for the National Science Foundation and other research orgs where I can pick when I sail. And so basically, I'll just make sure to be here.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move into some questions that are a little bit more on the road of what city council is all about. And this comes from a citizen. The speed limit on Mullen Road needs to be lowered from the Ranch Club Del Mar Estates past Kona Road. As the population increases, the existing 55 mile an hour speed limit is too high, and we are experiencing more accidents, near accidents, and excessive wait times exiting our neighborhoods. How can we make a lower speed limit on Mullen to occur? Recognize that that's not all in the city. So we'll start with Myrza.
Yes, yes, it is. It is too high. I am chair of the Public Works and Mobility Committee, and I work pretty closely with our city engineers. And over the years, we have worked to lower the speed limits in several neighborhoods, just because once you add development, you add traffic, people need to get places, and the speed limits sometimes are significantly higher than they could be in order for everyone to be safe on the road. We most recently worked on Mary Jane Boulevard, England Boulevard, in the Pleasant View neighborhood. Mullen Road is a state route, and we are working with the state DOT to see how we can lower that speed limit. I won't bore you with the engineering jargon that has to, that's associated with trying to do that, but we're working on it.
Thank you. Next, Sam, followed by Gwen.
My mic's been on this whole time. Sorry about that. Hope nobody heard me breathing. Speed limits are an interesting topic, because they have a huge effect not only on safety, but on efficiency of vehicles as well. And so there's, you know, two reasons we really want to have lower speed limits. For a place like Mullen Road, it's really important, because a lot of people drive out there, and there's a lot of people who live pretty close to that road. So, you know, some of the things we need to do when we talk about transportation to make sure we're keeping it sustainable. And one of those things does require that we advocate for lower speed limits, even if we can't directly change them. Some of this stuff takes the shape of traffic interventions, like roundabouts and calming circles, which effectively lower the speed limit. And there's also a lot of these nice sort of pedestrian islands that are popping up all over the place, such as you might have seen in front of Bernice's Bakery. I want more of a lot of that stuff. Thank you.
Gwen, followed by Sierra.
So to look at lowering the speed limit on Mullen Road, a lot of what Myrza referenced, there's traffic engineering, there's a lot of science that goes into it, and the way the road is engineered, and the psychology behind how people drive on roads, and you have to work with that. And if you're going to change it, you have to do it in a way that you get the intended result. Otherwise, it will be ignored, and people will not, you will not change their behavior. But it's something in Ward Three, Ward Three is mostly built out. But now, we have more people coming into Missoula, and we want people who are driving through all of our residential areas to go slowly, so that they aren't hitting people and causing accidents. So something that I worked on and was happy it was ultimately approved by council was narrowing Fifth and Sixth Street from two lanes down to one. You could put speed limit signs up, and it didn't change anything. But narrowing those lanes from two down to one effectively did make it slower going through the neighborhoods.
Thank you, and we'll hear from Sierra, followed by Tim.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. The speed limit on Mullen is, it's very fast. And we're going to continue to see so much growth in that area. You know, Ward Two is so unique. We account for 50% of Missoula's growth. And so we are seeing a lot of infrastructure in that area. And so I think that, one of the things that's been so interesting on being on council is, you know, roads like Mullen and Reserve Street, they take a lot of different agencies to come together to make change. And I think that that is something that I do well, and I can work with all different agencies. I do it in my day job. And I am learning to do it now on council, and understanding just all the different nuances of different agencies and bringing them together to make good decisions. And I think we're going to have to continue to make really good decisions for Mullen specifically, because it does have a lot of traffic, and we're going to continue to see more traffic there.
Thank you. Tim?
Yes, a lot of those decisions on the traffic and on the speed of traffic is going to be statistics-driven, and capturing the statistics of those accidents is something that it's going to have to be utilized in making those decisions. But like I spoke earlier about, is we have to be able as city council to work with the state, work with the county, and work in those jurisdictions to assist, because even though it's outside the city, we can influence that. And we do have a lot of those county residents that use that state road to commute to the city, and it is a concern for them. So liaising with the other levels of government is important in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question also comes from a citizen. Do you have a position on development of residential housing at Fort Missoula? Please tell us why you do or do not support the proposed development. And we'll start with Gwen, followed by Sam.
So, on land use decisions like that, council serves in a quasi-judicial capacity. We are deciding property use and laws applying to property and private property rights. So I technically can't speak to any proposal regarding anything going on out in Fort Missoula unless it has been noticed in a public meeting, so I cannot comment.
Sam?
I do not support building out Fort Missoula. I'll just be super blunt about that. I'll give you the straight answer. No. I feel like there's a lot of better places to build in our city. And I will respectfully disagree with the previous comment from my opponent here that Ward Three is built out. For example, there's a ton of space in Ward Three, right here where I'm trying to represent where we could build. There's a lot of folks I've talked to as I knock who are, you know, older folks that have had great careers and have wonderful houses, and they live in one or two people in a 2,000 or 3,000 square foot home on an 8,000 square foot lot. And they're suffering under property taxes, and they'd benefit a lot from having an extra unit or two in the back that they could rent out. So I think before we look at building on our awesome recreation lands and open space, and basically letting the city sprawl out in all these different directions, and, you know, also building on top of really important historical resources, we need to focus on building where community, like services with stores and coffee shops already exist, so people can get to those without having to drive. Thank you.
We'll hear now from Tim, and Sierra will follow.
I think overall, Missoula has an issue with the amount of affordable housing available, and not utilizing the space that the city already owns and possesses, and has an ability to lower the fee whenever developers are trying to develop that city space and offer up that city space to developers, to lower the overall affordable housing. And not specific to Fort Missoula, but anywhere in the city. If there's space to build, then there's space, if the city has the land, the city can offer up that land to drive down the affordable housing in many situations. And so in that case, whether it's Fort Missoula, or it's Grant Creek, or it's John Mullen, it doesn't matter where it's at. If there's space available, we should be developing it. There are too many people without houses that can't afford houses, and we need to drive down that affordable housing cost.
Thank you. Sierra, followed by Myrza.
Okay, yeah, I also, similar to Gwen, cannot say whether I favor or do not favor the Fort Missoula development. But I will say that in my job at the DNRC, I manage all the state trust lands within the southwestern part of the state, and I really do value our open space and our public land. And I think it's something that we, is unique to Missoula, is the amount of open space that we have and that we can access it. I do think that we're at a tricky spot where we do have to find, we have to be able to increase our density. And so I think that within the city limits, we can get a little more creative with infill and having more dense housing, but also protecting some of our precious state land and federal land and open space parks, so that people actually still want to live here and access those areas.
Thank you. And Myrza?
Same as Gwen, as a city and council member, being asked on a project that has already entered our review process, we're not, we're advised to only discuss it in a legally noticed public forum, so I will refrain from making that, from discussing it. I do think, however, that there will be opportunities for us to talk about how we balance the need for more housing and the preservation of our historic resources and our open spaces, and I look forward to that.
Thank you. The next question also comes from a citizen. In the context of parking, particularly in the university district, what innovative solutions do you believe the city can introduce that strike a fair balance between the interests of the university, its students, and the local residents? And we'll start with Tim, followed by Sierra.
First off, I mean, no matter where it's at in Missoula, there should be more access to parking garages. We need to take advantage of the fact that we can build up in some areas rather than out. And having parking garages that have levels to them, multiple levels to them, will give us back that parking space. Those garages, many throughout the United States, parking garages have multiple levels, and they're covered on top with solar panels, which also adds greenery to our, green to our system in which we get our energy as well. So those same things, similar to our own library, having a parking structure underneath of it, having office spaces within it. The university district area has the ability to do that in some areas, and to build those structures and build those multiple levels of that structure, office spaces in it, solar power on it, and that's just on us to be able to get the space and offer that up.
Thank you. Sierra, followed by Myrza.
Yeah, thanks. When I was a student, parking on campus was next to impossible, and the park and ride was sort of this new innovation at the time. And I think that, which kind of makes me sound old, but now the park and ride is something that I think a lot of students use. And I think that we can continue in the university area to, to look at ways that make parking less of a necessity. So I think that if we continue to use public transportation the way the university has, and also making the neighborhood more bike-friendly and walk-friendly, then we can rely less on vehicles and make it an easier commute for students, so that we can balance the parking in that area for, so that students and residents can live harmoniously together. I think that that would be the part of the city, is to really look at ways that we can alleviate the parking issues by making parking not necessarily such a necessity.
Thank you. Sam, followed by Gwen. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Sam. It's Myrza's turn. I lost my place.
Thank you. I agree with Sierra that our focus perhaps should not be on how to accommodate the constantly increasing number of cars and their needs in our community, but rather focus on providing safe, alternative ways for people to move around town. I think that that's really important, especially in the university. I think the university is pretty unique in terms of the type of housing that's there. Not many houses have a garage. I also want to say that garages might be a good idea, but they're very expensive. They consume a huge amount of land. And I know that for some residential developments, they are now incorporating parking underground as a way to alleviate some of the on-street traffic, parking, I mean. But I do think that there's the convenience aspect of having on-street parking. So overall, I think this is a conversation we need to have.
Thank you. Now, Sam?
All right. I like to talk about parking. So in terms of the university in particular, I think since a lot of the folks that are causing a lot of the parking issues in the university are students who either just moved here, or only moved here recently, and are not going to be around for necessarily their whole entire lives, I think it would be interesting if we could start to disincentivize automobile ownership in certain parts of town. And I don't want to make more and more parking to the degree that we have more and more cars. The more cars we have, the more, you know, carbon we're putting into the atmosphere, and the more public safety we're basically putting at risk. To disincentivize that, we can make our public transit better and better by having our bus lines connect to more parts of town more regularly, without having to come through transfer stations. We can also do that by having way better bike infrastructure that feels safer and encourages people to ride when they might drive. And we can also do this through having more car share programs. This is super important for the climate as well as safety, and I'd like to disincentivize parking.
And Gwen?
I think it's great the more people who can walk, bike, and bus. But the reality is also in the university district, we have 10,000 students plus thousands of staff at the university. We have a full residential district. We have Hellgate High School with 1,300 students. We have the Hip Strip, which has bustling businesses. There's a lot of pressure in that area. And ever since I got on council, I've heard and heard and heard people who are unhappy with the RPPP. So over the years, I talked to the Parking Commission, and I went to several board meetings, and I said, I think you really need to take another look at this. I think we can do it better. It was created in the 1980s. It hasn't changed since, and the world has moved around it. And every time I go to a college town, I swear, not only do I look at the parking meters, but I also look at how are they parking in their residential areas next to a campus, because there's better ways to do it. So I talked to the board. They did a big parking study, which just finished, and we're going to see the results of those pretty soon. Get some ideas.
Thank you very much. A next question also comes from a citizen, and it's combined with another question that we have. And we'll start with Myrza, and the question is, what do you see as your ward's most major challenges and assets? What do you see as your ward's major challenges and assets? And along with that, the question is, what do you think is the most pressing infrastructure need in your ward?
We don't have any challenges. I think that I have been knocking on, Sierra has on a lot of doors in our ward, and I can, I can tell you that the traffic associated with the amount of growth is having an impact on established neighborhoods. And so creating that, finding mitigation techniques and ways to ensure that people who have lived in those neighborhoods for a long time don't feel the extreme pressure of all these new developments. So I would say that that's, that's one of our challenges right now in Ward Two, is how do we accommodate everyone that keeps moving into these areas? One of the assets, I think it's that we do have, for better or worse, we have a lot of land available for growth and development. But I would say the biggest asset in Ward Two are the people who live in Ward Two. They are resilient, they're good neighbors, and I think they have really good intentions about the growth that's happening. Sorry.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Gwen, and follow that, her answer by, with Sam.
Okay, I think I need to talk really fast. This is a big question in one minute here. Challenges, I would say housing costs. We have a huge spectrum of different housing costs in Ward Three. Some of the highest housing costs in Missoula, other areas where it's lower, but it's still unattainable for many folks, so that's an ongoing challenge. Assets, it's an incredibly central ward, and when these neighborhoods are so central, you can bike ride, take buses, walk so many places. In terms of our infrastructure, there's two that I would put out there. First, getting bike lanes on the Hip Strip is a huge priority for me, because it is just so unsafe. And with the RACE grant that's coming in, And with the RACE grant that's coming in for the SAM project, I think we're going to be able to do that in the next few years. I'm thrilled. Um, but also as you head west in Ward Three, there's less and less infrastructure in terms of sidewalks, curb, all of this street infrastructure, because some of that used to be county and then became city. And so those sidewalks are really important for people's quality of life.
Sam, follow, I'm sorry. Yes, Sam followed by Tim.
Thank you very much. Uh, so yeah, our greatest challenge in Ward Three, as far as I can tell, and this just, this just comes from knocking on doors again, right? Which is where I'm gathering a lot of my information here, talking to people. The biggest challenge in Ward Three is really balancing the needs of this wide band of people from the socioeconomic spectrum. You know, Ward Three includes, uh, not only the university area, which is a pretty well-to-do area, but it also has Russell Street corridor and a portion of Franklin to the fort now, thanks to the Ward redistricting. So making sure to, um, represent the needs of people that have really different experiences of life, I think is our biggest challenge. I'd say our biggest asset is the, uh, the centrality, uh, and, um, concentration of services and just general awesomeness that Ward Three has. Everything from a huge piece of riverfront to the Hip Strip, to the university. As far as I can tell, Ward Three, uh, you could stay in the ward and not have to leave and live a full life. Uh, infrastructure, housing.
Thank you. Um, Tim, followed by Sierra.
Uh, challenges in Ward Two, uh, really is the traffic that runs through the arterial there on Reserve Street and the left-hand turns that are there on that multi-lane, uh, road system. And there's like two traffic lights in that area, a lot of, uh, uncontrolled intersections. And so getting those intersections controlled and this traffic safety, there's accidents on that almost every day. So that is a big challenge. And also the growth is a challenge and making sure the infrastructure keeps up with the growth. The growth, not only within West Side, next to what was the, uh, Burn Street Bistro and the population growth there, but more so when you get out, uh, with access off of Mullen and, um, Broadway with the areas out there where we're, we're adding more growth behind the VA center. Uh, the asset is the land available. We do have the room for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Sierra.
Yeah, so, you know, um, the Mullen area and Grant Creek and the West Side are, are really different neighborhoods. They're vastly different, but the thing that I think that I'm hearing from all the neighborhoods that is similar, is similar to what we're hearing is just the massive growth and infrastructure that's happening in every single one of those neighborhoods. They're all feeling it. They're feeling it in different ways, but they all feel it. And I think that, um, that is definitely one of the biggest challenges right now is how do we accommodate all these people who are moving into these different neighborhoods? I think that the asset for the neighborhood is, is just the, the, the diversity of the neighborhoods. This is the most diverse ward, I would say. Um, we have the West Side folks who are experiencing a lot of infill. We have folks out in Grant Creek who are also seeing new development that, um, puts a squeeze on them. Um, and it's just a massive, different neighborhood. Um, and I think that that's what's so unique, uh, is you see just a huge amount of diversity with our neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Our next question is a combination, uh, both from one that was submitted by a citizen and from one of our questions. And so I'll read both of them together as one question and they're both on the same topic. Recognizing the limited evacuation options in areas like Miller Creek and the Rattlesnake, what steps do you think the city could take to enhance emergency preparedness for these communities? And attached with that is, is Missoula adequately prepared to respond in the event of a major disaster such as wildfire or severe flooding? And we'll start with Sam with answers to that question, followed by Gwen.
So this is an issue that I've actually, uh, heard people mention before, and it is a pretty interesting issue because if you look at Miller Creek and you look at the Rattlesnake, there's kind of one or two roads in and out. And so in terms of, uh, you know, getting people in and out of there, uh, it could be real challenging if something serious like a crown fire came through the Rattlesnake, getting everybody out of there in time, that's going to be a big deal. And you know, to be honest, we won't find out until that happens. We work hard to have a prepared EMS system in this town and you know, I think it's pretty good. Uh, in another lifetime, many years ago, I even worked on the ambulance here, uh, for Missoula Emergency Services and I was super impressed by, uh, how together that organization was, especially, uh, when we got to work with the fire departments too. They really had it together. That being said, when, um, the rubber really hits the road and a big emergency hits the town, you're never as prepared as you want to be, you know? I look at some of the disasters that have hit other towns and hope that doesn't happen here, but we're going to do our best. Thank you.
Gwen, followed by Sierra.
Um, we often have presentations in council. Um, Adrian Beck, uh, on this topic, Adrian Beck runs the emergency management services office for the county and they collaborate with the city. And if you've ever met Adrian, she's wonderful and I place total confidence in her. She is a strong, smart, get it done kind of person. So we have a ton of contingency plans, trying to anticipate anything that will happen. Um, and we've had a lot of discussions in council about forest fires happening on these super dry summers up these gullies and, and valleys and how are we going to get people out? And I can tell you, there's a lot of plans. We've got a ton of resources to put towards it. One of the biggest factors is if emergency services says to leave your house, people need to leave their house when they are asked to leave their house. Sometimes they hunker down and stay and that's when we really run into problems. Um, that's what I've seen on the floor of council.
Thank you. Sierra, followed by Tim.
Yeah, I think I have kind of a unique perspective on this. Um, I am married to a city firefighter and I do work at the DNRC with the Wildland, uh, Fire Program. So I think that to answer the question, are we prepared? Yes, I think we are. I think that we have one of the best, um, fire departments that arguably within Montana. Um, and I know specifically in Grant Creek, there's been a lot of work between the county and the DNRC and the city, and they have done, um, plans together. They've, um, done things where they've actually gotten together and talked about if there was a fire in Grant Creek, how would they get people out? So they have worked together already and made a plan. And I do think that, um, we have the right resources. Um, and I think that we have to continue to fund those resources so that we can make sure that everyone is safe in all the neighborhoods like the Rattlesnake and Grant Creek and Miller Creek.
Thank you. Sam, Tim?
Yes, um, I think a lot of the neighborhoods in Missoula are sort of segmented and designed that way on purpose. And you talk like Grant Creek, uh, there's some areas where it's 20 feet of grass between the parking lots and going over the, the bump of grass to get into behind the Cracker Barrel. Um, and those were designed that way on purpose, but with that infrastructure in mind, there's easier ways to gain access to Grant Creek if there's an issue long-term with growth by just creating the access. And that should be part of our growth policy is whenever we are creating growth in neighborhoods, we should be at, also looking at how we are going to provide alternate access to those neighborhoods as part of that growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mirtha?
Um, yeah, um, wildfire is one of the things that I have learned, um, over the years is that it's not an if, it's a when. Um, when that happens, we need to be prepared and I believe that we have, um, agencies that are coordinating to ensure that we have preparedness plans in place. Um, for especially, um, I know for areas like Grant Creek, that has been, uh, a topic. Um, for my constituents, it's a concern for many of us. Um, I do agree that our emergency management services office is well-prepared. Um, and I agree that I, I know that we are ready and we are prepared. Um, my, what I have been advocating is that, um, while we have a plan, that plan needs to be better known by the public so that we know what to do. And as a child of, uh, a, a country with earthquakes and tsunamis, we all know what to do in case of an emergency. So I do think that, um, we, I would like to see that, um, um, may be available to the public.
Thank you. Now with a shift of gears from infrastructure questions, we're going to go into another question that came from a citizen. If you have a plan to address homelessness in Missoula, will your plan affect property taxes? And we'll start with Sierra, followed by Tim.
Um, okay. Yeah, so, um, I think to me, the plan for, to do, address the homelessness, um, problem right now is, um, we really have to bring all the right people to the table. This, this is not something that the city can or should solve alone. We have to bring lots of other people together. Um, and I think that we've seen some models work and we've seen some models not work. And one of the models that I think that, um, seems to work really well right now is a temporary safe outdoor shelter. I think that we could continue looking at, um, models similar to that to help get people in shelters. Um, will it impact, uh, property taxes? I think that, you know, we have to, we're going to have to really look at ways that we can fund these types of, um, initiatives that don't hit our property taxes. So that looks like different funding sources, um, and bringing all different people to the table to help solve the problem so that it doesn't all fall on the city 100%.
Thank you. Tim, followed by Mirtha.
Yes, um, I think there's rhetoric out there that says a lot of these homeless individuals are Missoulians and in many cases they are, and I don't dismiss that. But we built some awesome shelters and the hearts and the minds of the Missoulians and the love to take care of each other, we have some great shelters we built. But when we built those shelters, we also brought in a population that utilizes those shelters. And to continue to build more, we're going to, in some ways, bring in more population. But also that population is a responsibility of the county, of the state and of this nation. And we have to be able to reach out and get resources from other levels of government to support this. Not every shelter has to be within the city. Not every camp has to be within the city. And also we've dealt with building the camps before and we have problems getting service providers to support our ideas of how we're going to build those camps, getting refuse in there to take the garbage out, getting somebody to rent us Portageons. A lot of service providers refuse to do that, then we cannot provide a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mirtha, followed by Gwen.
I, I think Missoulians are being taxed enough and I think that if we are going to, um, ask for, um, taxpayers to help us in this endeavor, that we need to put it to the voters. Um, I know that we had a crisis levy that did not pass, but I'm hopeful that maybe we need to rethink about how we do this. But I would like to stay away from, um, putting more pressure on property taxpayers and instead I think it, we need to exercise our power of convening and have all the agencies and all the, um, all the different people that need to be at the table to really talk about how we're going to do this. I am concerned about how we're going to do this next year because we do, I think, need to focus our efforts on the underlying issues of, um, homelessness and we need to figure out, um, how to increase capacity for shelters in a, in a permanent way.
Thank you. Gwen, followed by Sam.
So Missoula has approximately the same amount of homeless people as Kalispell, but Kalispell does not provide near the, um, services and shelters that Missoula does. We are just a progressive town that wants to take care of people to the extent that we can. And we've gone in that direction, but I do think, um, this budget this last summer was very, very hard. We were able to fund the Johnson Street Shelter, but next summer it will be 10 times harder. And I'm not sure what the future holds for that. We're going to have to figure it out. And I feel like local government is being tapped out on this. Um, and similar to what Mirtha said, we need to convene, but I think it's going to need to be a community conversation. The Pavarello was not built with tax dollars. It was a private capital campaign. And I think this community will need to decide what direction we want to go in, how are we going to fund it? Are we going to make it work? And local government can facilitate that conversation and lead that conversation, but this is going to be a community lift.
Sam?
So, uh, homelessness is a huge issue, especially as NOC, again, people are mentioning this, it's a big deal, you can see it, you don't have to be told. Um, and I do have a plan. My plan, uh, would be to manage these temporary campsites and allow a temporary authorized campsite, uh, under the pretense that it's not going to be forever. And that site does need to have sanitation and trash and charging services so service providers can call people who need services on their phone. If you don't even have a place to charge your phone, it's pretty hard to lift yourself up, you know? Get in touch with services. Once we get there and we've built out all the mental health and addiction and workforce reentry programs and emergency shelters that we need to address the size of the homeless population in Missoula, we can definitely revisit the ban on outdoor camping. And I think that's a big conversation that we'll have to have when we have a good alternative. Um, as far as funding this, I don't have enough time to tell you about my parking sticker idea, but I will hopefully in another question coming up here soon. All right.
Thank you. Related to that is another question about homelessness. Solving Missoula's homeless crisis will take a team of organizations and people working together. Which new team players would you like to enlist to solve this problem and why? And we'll start with Mirtha, followed by Sam.
Churches and, um, I think anyone who is affected, um, by the, the number of unhoused members of the community, um, should be part of that conversation, including those who are out on the street, uh, including people who are unhoused. So, um, I, I think we're going to have to start thinking outside that very traditional box on, in terms of who needs to be at that table. But just top of mind, I think our, um, religious, um, establishments and entities, um, the university, um, the college, um, anyone and everyone who is touched in one way or another by the, the situation that we have in front of us.
Thank you. Sam, followed by Gwen.
I wholeheartedly endorse Mirtha's answer because those are basically my two main things that I would say as well. Um, as I've been knocking, I've talked to a lot of members of different churches around the ward who are, uh, really excited to get their congregations and their people involved with this. Uh, and that, you know, it's going to be slow, but hopefully we will find the momentum for that. Um, the other people who have a, a real big part to play here are the people who actually need help. And a lot of times when you're in a position such as being homeless and you're trying to lift yourself out of there or find help to get out of there, uh, one of the best things you can do is have a purpose, you know? And so if you, uh, anybody in this room could find ourselves in that situation. If you were to find yourself in that situation, uh, I would hope that you wouldn't just sit there and hope for somebody to help you, that you might find it within yourself to be a part of that solution. When you do that, when you have a purpose and you're working towards something like that, uh, you actually make strides faster than if somebody else is just taking care of it for you. Uh, I'm going to learn to get a little bit further away from this mic because I'm hearing my breath. Thank you.
Thank you. Sierra, I'm sorry, Gwen, followed by Sierra.
Um, I think we've got some common themes here. I, I think, uh, I think government has been playing a big role for the last, um, few years, which is good, but I think, as I said, we're, we're kind of tapped out and we're going to need to have a broader umbrella. So I think the faith community, um, some of the entities parallel to that, um, Missoula Interfaith Collaborative, which taps into the faith community, common good, family promise, um, these are some of the entities that I think it comes within their mission. And we need to have some more conversations to, to start, um, expanding that volunteerism. Because I think there's a lot of, a lot of potential there. We, we honestly, we're still reeling from the pandemic and, and everybody's still getting their feet on the ground. And now we have all of these economic impacts from the pandemic. Housing prices have gone up, homeless in Missoula. So I think we need to kind of, everybody take a deep breath, resettle and start having some holistic, community-wide conversations.
Sierra, followed by Tim.
Yeah, I don't want to sound repetitive, but I, I would agree with, I think, what everyone has said so far. Um, we do have to expand this, um, umbrella a little bit to different partners such as the faith communities, private partners. And I think we also have to look a little bit outside of Missoula as well and look at the state level and really put some pressure on having some more resources for our mental health, um, services from the state. And I think that we can actually, um, look for some private partnerships outside of the state as well, um, or at the state level. I think the other thing that Sam touched on that I think is really important, um, is we do have to hear from the people with these lived experiences. Um, a lot of times we, um, think we're solving an issue and we find out that's not even the issue that needs to be solved. So I think that that is a, a time that we should really be listening to folks who are in the actual experience and, and hear what it is that they specifically need to feel secure.
Thank you. And Tim?
Yes, um, I'm also, like I mentioned earlier, involved with scouts and my daughter, she was, she's a Girl Scout and she did her bronze project this year in building blankets and donating blankets to the children's. in building blankets and donating blankets to the children's shelter, the Mothers for Children Shelter. She, my wife is a scout master for the only all-girls troop under the Traditional Boy Scouts of America program in Missoula. And they work with the First United Methodist Church to provide meals for the POV. And also, they have a plan within the youth, how they will support in case of emergency, whether that's FEMA or otherwise, evacuation displacement of people that they have with the church and how they can support the church and how youth can stay involved in that. And then additionally, I work with the Veteran Support Network and focusing on taking a bite out of it, not taking all of it on at one time. We have about 10% of that homeless population within our veteran community. And our veteran community works together to solve those issues for the veterans and to take that bite out of it and to assist there. So it's different groups taking different bites to come together and work the overall issue. Thank you.
Great. On the other end of the homeless and living challenge, Missoula is growing and projected to continue to grow. We need to add hundreds of new homes every year to meet our growing demand. How should the city help increase our housing supply? And we'll start with Gwen, followed by Sam.
Only one minute. This is really hard. One of the biggest things we're doing is code reform, which has its two prongs. One is to simplify our code so that when builders come through, it is faster and easier to use and time is money. That's a good thing. Second thing is to bring our base zoning and our regulations in line with our growth policy, which calls for more density. And by doing that, instead of having individual rezonings coming through council, which take a huge amount of time, that will facilitate a lot more building. I did want to read off some numbers. In the following 2008, we were not building nearly as much in this valley. And I've always heard we need between 600 to 800 units a year to just stay even, give or take. But 2021, we had 1,124 permits issued. 2022, 1,188. And for half of 2023, we had 700. So we are building a lot right now, which will help, but we certainly need to keep going.
Thank you. And Sam, followed by Tim.
Yeah, so it's going to be hard to build our way out of this, but we're sure as heck going to try. We might not be able to build our way all the way out of it. It's true, but that doesn't mean we're not going to do everything we can. One of the things I want to do is make sure that when we are using public money to support any kind of development, be it affordable or anything, is that we're using it in the right way and that we're getting the impact that we want, that the community wants. One of the first steps would be to properly define and narrow down what we're talking about when we talk about affordable housing. I'm not sure who, you know, here has looked at prices recently, probably everybody, but they're getting pretty wild. And we need to make sure that we put real numbers on what it means to build affordable housing. So that when we're handing out those incentives, that, you know, we're hitting the mark. That, at the same time, these incentives for developers to build stuff, once we've defined affordability, need to be real valuable incentives, incentives that are compelling. And otherwise, people won't build what we want them to build.
Tim, followed by Sierra.
Permitting is an issue. I mean, charging, lowering the cost for permits for developers will lower the overall affordable housing costs for individuals. But also streamlining that, using continuous process improvement, CPI, to ensure that the permit from the time it starts to the time it's approved, that short, short length of time, because developers are trying to plan out an estimate of how much it's going to cost. But materials change in cost over time. So making it easier for the developers to develop, taking advantage of the land that the city already has to develop that land and at no cost to the developers. We're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about lowering the overall cost and making that city land available to develop. So those are some of the issues that I see. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sierra, followed by Myrza.
Yeah, so I, I come from a family of small business owners. My dad and my brother have both been builders in this community. And I've heard a lot of times that sometimes getting building plans through the city is really hard to do. And so one of the things I'm hoping that comes out of the code reform process is that we can kind of find some efficiencies within our different departments that can kind of increase the pace of getting plans through. That being said, we're never going to build our way out of this. And I've heard from several developers that it is impossible to build an affordable single-family residence right now with the cost of labor and the cost of materials. So we're going to have to get a little bit creative here. We're, we're not going to be able to build these single-family homes that people want anymore. We're going to have to find different ways that people can live together. And so I think that we have some exciting things that are coming. We can do some different incentives. And then also, I'm excited about the MRA pivoting with the workforce housing. And I think that that's a huge benefit to our community and I'm excited about that as well.
Thank you. Again, related to that, I'm sorry, Myrza?
I'm going to start taking this personally.
This isn't a hard job. I just can't do it well.
I agree that one of the main things that's going to help us in achieving some of those benchmarks is our code reform process and we're in the middle of that. That aligned with our growth policy will be key, but also our transportation plans, ensuring that we have transit-oriented development, context-sensitive design, that we encourage mixed-use development whenever possible, that we encourage diversity of housing types. I think strengthening our public and private partnerships is going to be really important. And I also think that state initiatives, primarily making more low-income tax credit funding available for a lot of those nonprofits that are out there trying to build more housing that's affordable for Missoulians is, is really going to be really important. Thanks.
Thank you. This question came from someone participating tonight. The city is in the process of researching equitable housing trends. Do you believe that all neighborhoods should participate and provide equitable housing to solve the housing crisis? And we'll start with Tim, followed by Sierra.
All right, do you read the question? I guess my question is, how do you define equitable housing?
The questioner didn't define it.
Okay.
Questioned.
So should every neighborhood participate? Yes. The housing issue is a Missoula issue. And it's not something that's specific to each individual neighborhood. It's, it's all neighborhoods. And so every neighborhood, yes, should be participating. And there is space for growth in every neighborhood. But, and I might be reading into the question, equitable might also be the equal opportunity for housing. In that case, that's an absolute yes. Everyone should be participating in that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Sierra, followed by Myrza.
Okay, yeah, I guess the, the short answer is, in a perfect world, yes. Every neighborhood would share a different piece of the, the development. In reality, that's not actually what we're seeing. So Ward Two, again, is seeing the bulk of all development. And so I think that that is something that our community is going to really have to understand is that every neighborhood is going to have to see some sort of development within it in order for us to be able to have a home for everyone. So I think that sometimes we hear from, some, some neighborhoods are louder than others. And I hope that on council, I can represent the wards that sometimes, you know, the word that doesn't sometimes get heard, such as the West Side. And, you know, we're, we hear a lot from Franklin and the Fort folks in the River Road area, where they're seeing so much development and they don't always feel like the city is hearing them. So my role on council will be to make sure that everyone's being heard equally.
Thank you. Myrza, followed by Sam.
Yeah, I think, you know, it, it's important to acknowledge that equitable doesn't mean equal. And I think that an equitable way of participating in this affordable housing and just housing issue is that we look at what the constraints are in different neighborhoods and be cognizant of that. For example, we have environmental constraints in several neighborhoods. We have infrastructure constraints and some other ones. So I, I think that that is all part of thinking through the different ways that we mitigate and that we, that we mitigate for the added growth in our community. But I also think that through the code reform process, we, that is an excellent platform and a way for our community to participate and have a voice and a seat at the table and talk about how we distribute the, the growth that we need in Missoula in order to accommodate more housing.
Thank you. Sam, followed by Gwen.
That's a great question. Yes, all the neighborhoods absolutely need to share the burden of creating equitable housing. As a younger person, I traveled and worked seasonal jobs for a period in my life. And I've been to towns and I've worked in towns where the opposite has been true, where the equitable or affordable or low income or whatever it's called in any given location, housing is pushed out and then service workers and the people who run the community end up having to bust in every day to provide basic services for people that live in the, you know, the lucky part of town. And that's not at all something I want to see happen in Missoula. So as we build out, you know, we're not going to make people build on their land who don't want to build on their land. But when people are open to it, we want to make it easy for them to build on their land. And again, that's going to come, like everybody here agrees, through code reform and simplifying our zoning so that if somebody does have a good idea for how they can provide housing on land that they control, they're free to do that.
Thank you. And Gwen?
So our 2019 housing policy that the city of Missoula created stipulates in there that all neighborhoods should contribute to affordable and equitable housing. It's, it's a value that is stated in our policy. I appreciate Sierra's point. We may, we may have that as an ideal on the ground. It, it sometimes is harder to implement all of the time. Sometimes we zone areas more densely and then single-family homes are still built. We can open the door. That's what we can control as government. And that's what I think through code reform, this is our opportunity to have a big community discussion and have some paradigm shifts in how we look at what we are building in this, in this city and how we can do it more densely and have a good quality of life and house our workers. So code reform is the vehicle to address this. And it's going to be interesting to see where we wind up with all of that because we have a huge opportunity by doing it.
Okay, thank you. The next question is some, is one that's on everybody's mind, I think. With drastically rising property taxes and no clear avenue for an increase in city revenue from other sources, how do you propose to control city expenditures and keep the city's budget balanced? And we'll start with Myrza and go to Gwen, Gwen, sorry.
I'm going to start thinking that you want me to start first than all of them. But property taxes is, is, is a, a big challenge. And that's because a lot of it is outside of the city council control. We really need to work at the state level to look at changing the structure of how taxes are calculated. We've been hearing a lot about burden shift and commercial versus residential property taxes, but that is a real issue. It is something that we need to tackle if, if we want to see any changes here in Missoula. I do think that in terms of our budget, I am looking forward to a new administration and a new way to look at balancing our budget so that we're not having to depend on increasing property taxes. I think, I think there are opportunities for us to be more efficient and with our taxpayers' dollars. And I, I'm looking forward to doing that.
Gwen, followed by Sam.
Sure, so it's a, it's a complicated problem. Our ARPA and CARES dollars from the pandemic bought us a few years, frankly. But now we are hitting this, I feel like we are just in the red zone with how high property taxes are at this point. And we're going to have to start making some decisions and it will be interesting to see what the new administration does. We are, we are literally providing less services now and charging much higher taxes than if you looked at 10 or 20 years ago. Our potholes are expanding. We're going to have to make some serious decisions. I think public safety is a very, very high value. And so that means parks and public works. These are the areas that we'll probably have to look at first for cuts. But to me, it's very frustrating because we should be able to offer a sufficient level of services if we have an updated taxation structure. So at some point, I hope the legislature addresses this because in the meantime, we're between a rock and a hard place. It's very frustrating.
Sam, followed by Tim.
So regarding property taxes, everybody wants to talk about this. This is a big issue. And unfortunately, we, you know, we can't on city council just cut taxes. It'd be great if we could. But one thing that we can do is we can advocate in collaboration with other local Montana communities to, you know, basically push the state to make the changes that people need all over the state. I think if we do that, we'll see that there's a lot of connection between communities around the state that are more right-leaning than Missoula. And, you know, we'll find a lot of commonality as we proceed with that. In terms of how to decide, you know, how to spend our public money here, I can't sit here and point at programs and say what I think we should cut because that's not really based on anything. Instead, we got to implement things like zero-based budgeting and program metrics to, you know, when appropriate. And these fit differently in different types of programs to decide when we're going to stop funding things that aren't delivering the results that we really need to get. Thank you.
Tim, followed by Sierra.
Yes, I think the law of property tax is based off of the legislature. We don't get a, at city level necessarily choice in how much property tax we're paying, but there are other things that pile onto that property tax as far as levies and things like that. I think there's a, you know, the numbers thrown out, there's 3.5 million tourists that come through Missoula every year that we fail to tap into that resource for funding. They add to the wear and tear on our roads. They benefit from our, our rivers and their, our sidewalks and our parks. And we don't really effectively have a way to capture or use them as part of our tax base. And therefore, everything comes back onto the property owners. When you cut property, or when you cut taxes in one area, it's going to go up somewhere else. And so the budget is set. I know I said a lot of this last night, but the budget's set, it's reset every year. But there's a cost for running the city and the taxes pay that cost. And whenever you lower taxes elsewhere, then the property taxes are going to go up. But capturing the, being able to tax that population that's already tourism in our city is probably the best way to approach it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sierra?
Yeah, so we, we definitely need tax reform at the state level. But until that happens, I think within what we can do within the city budget, we, we really do have to take a hard look at the property taxes. And, and this last budget session was a very hard vote and I, I did lose sleep. I don't take it lightly that we raised taxes by 9%. I think that when you look at our budget, you know, over 50% of it is police and fire. And there is, the rest is, there's not a lot left over after that. So I think to solve that, we're really going to have to get serious about how we're going to fund the fire department. We have to increase the fire department. So I know that we've looked at a fire levy and I think that that is something that we really have to get serious about because that, that resource has to grow and it's, our community is not shrinking. And I also think that we need to look at another revenue source, similar to what Timothy mentioned, some sort of tourist option tax, because it is a huge amount of people coming through our community and we're not recouping any of those costs.
Thank you. In so many ways, the city's ability to tax and spend is dictated by the state of Montana. What can the city do to have a more effective voice in the legislature? Not only our city, but all cities of Montana. What can we do to have a more effective voice in the legislature? And we'll start with Sam and go to Gwen.
I was looking forward to going first on one of these. One of the things we can do to have a more effective voice in the legislature is we can create an environment in our city that builds a sense of civic service. It's kind of a soft thing and comes through, you know, culture and education. But if we create the type of people in Missoula that are likely to go and serve in Helena over time, and, you know, it's going to be years, we will start to see the kind of change we want. Another thing we can do is we can work together with other local communities, as I referenced in my previous answer. And oftentimes, I think that as we build those alliances based on common interests, we'll find that those common interests are a lot stronger than a lot of the divisive things that we find in the national narrative that are tearing people apart right now. So, you know, a combined approach of education, community culture of service and civic engagement and outreach throughout the state to basically find the people who want the same thing that we want. I think there's a lot of them. Thank you.
Gwen, followed by Sierra.
So the League of Cities and Towns, which has all towns and all cities in Montana are part of that, their highest priority is tax reform. They've been working on it for years. I have gone over to the I have gone over to the legislature probably four or five times in the last six years to testify in committees and at the legislature on tax reform. It hasn't gotten much traction yet. And I think we have to keep working on it, but it's, you know, eight years ago, when I first got onto council, it was, well, taxes are starting to get a little bit high. Now, tax reform is actually the phrase people are using, recognizing that the structure needs to change. So this is good. This is forward movement. When there's that many people in Montana that start wanting this, I think the conversations will eventually happen, but it's painful until it actually happens in the legislature. And frankly, I don't understand the legislature because it's just such a different beast in city council. But also, the city of Missoula now has a lobbyist, not just for the four months of legislative session, but for 24 months, the entire two years. And I think a lot of those discussions happen then.
Great. Thank you, Sierra, followed by Tim.
Yeah, so what we can do to be more effective with the legislature, I think we continue to resources towards lobbyists. I think the other thing that is super unique to Missoula is we are a really engaged community and we can speak at the legislature and make our voices heard. You know, we, we've heard from other city council folks that they don't even have forums. They just put their name on the ballot and that's all they have to do. We, we have a really engaged community here. And so you guys are here and can make your voice known at the legislature. I think we can also continue to collaborate with all the other cities, similar to what Gwen said. And I think the other thing that we can really do is have close community relationships with our state representatives. And a lot of times, Myrta and I have already been working closely with Jonathan Carlin on a lot of issues. And I think that that's a really important piece is if we are making sure that we are talking to our state representatives so that they have all the information they need during the session.
Thank you. And Tim, followed by Myrta.
Yes, and just to echo what Gwen said, it's a collaboration of cities and making sure that our voices are heard there. Working myself with the neighborhood neighborhood committees, we try to make sure that we are talking with the city council, that we're talking with the representatives that are going to Helena, that we're talking with the county. And it's about that communicating with them and also getting our constituents to communicate with them. Because who we send is what's important and they're the ones who are going to be voting and they're going to be representing these constituents. So a lot of it is on us as a community and who we're sending up there to represent us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Myrta?
Yeah, just like our constituents elect us to carry their voice here on city council, I think we need to elect those state representatives that carry the value and the voice of Missoulians at the legislature in Helena. But short of that, I think we all need to take a more active role and we need to start going to Helena. We need to start testifying. Since COVID, I think it's now easier to testify online. And so I think that we, it might fall in the fears, but we need to continue to do it. Every chance we can. I also think we need to find those unusual partners in helping us carry our message in Helena. I'm not sure what all of those are, but I can think of, for example, the business community. If we don't have enough disposable income to spend supporting those businesses, they're gonna suffer the consequences. So I think we need to start looking at those unusual partners that can help us carry that voice in Helena.
Thank you. Truth be told, I have enough questions to keep us here for another couple of hours. But the good news is, this will be our final question of the evening before we get into your closing statements. Next June, during the primary election, Missoula voters will be asked whether to undertake a review of our form of local government, which in our case is a city charter, was adopted by the people in 1996. What are the benefits of any in conducting a local government review? And we'll start with Sierra and go to Tim.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this, this review. I think that the benefits are that we really can take a hard look at how we are operating within the city and make some changes. I think that we can really look at the way our council is set up and see if there is ways to tweak it. I don't know what the study will actually say. I think that I have some ideas on what we could do differently. But I think that it's going to be really interesting to see what some of the what some of the suggestions are. And I hope that we can really take it to heart and implement them and make some changes where there can be some we can make some efficiencies and improve how we, how we operate. So I look forward to that study and I'm excited for it.
Tim, followed by Myrta.
Yes, I think there's a lot of innovations. I mean, they've taken place in several decades since the last time we reviewed. I think those innovations are both in technology, but also in the fact that there's new ways and new processes to do things. And there's also the growth of the city in general. Does the, does what we have decades ago really fit the system that we have today? So I think having the review and being able to implement some of that in modernization into what Missoula is today is beneficial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Myrta, followed by Gwen.
Yeah, I think a review is, is good, is important. I see it as an important aspect of our democratic process to ensure that our government is working for all of us and working the way we need it to work. A lot has changed in 10 years. So I think it's, I'm supportive of it and I'm looking forward to see what comes out of that process.
Thank you. Gwen, followed by Sam.
I think it's always good to take stock periodically and that's what this structure sets up, taking stock of our local government. Missoula has a strong mayor, weak council form of government, which is different from every other big city in Montana. They all have city managers. So we're Missoula, we're different, we do it differently. And I also think because of that, we've had a very visionary government and we've done a lot of amazing things in Missoula. Also, the local government studies set up neighborhood councils, which I think are a really wonderful tool in Missoula that provides great communication and engagement. So it has served us well in the past and I'm curious to see what happens in the future, to see what taking stock means.
Thank you. And Sam?
I do totally agree that we have a visionary town and I like that. I really agree with that. And I'm glad that Missoula stands out. But that being said, times have changed, you know? When our charter was created, we lived in a different world. The speed at which things are changing in this world is increasing. Everything from phones to transportation to medicine to you name it. Government needs to change with that. We just need to basically account for how life is actually conducted in this day and age and what the needs of, you know, citizens and residents and businesses really are today, not what they were, you know, decades ago. When we do this review, we'll also have the opportunity to remove parts of the government that don't serve a purpose that's as important today as it might have been back in the day and reallocate that energy and that funding to new things. The world is changing fast and government will never fully keep up, but I'm hoping that this will be the first of many reviews over years to come. Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll now move to the closing statement. You'll have two minutes to make a closing statement. Our order will be Myrta, Sam, Gwen, Sierra and Tim. So Myrta, if you would, please.
Sure. Thank you again to everyone who participated tonight. I moved to Missoula more than 20 years ago and I came here as a young, fresh out of college planner. I landed a job with the city of Missoula and I have seen the changes in Missoula. I later got married and I had kids and I was able to, with my Missoula salary and my husband's, able to purchase a home. That is not the reality for a lot of Missoulians today. And I believe that my background, my professional background, my commitment to this community is why I want to continue to serve. I think that we are at a very critical point in Missoula where we have to make some really tough choices, tough decisions. And I think that experience is important. I have served on council through a pandemic, through the loss of our mayor. And I have lived in Missoula as a single person, as a mom. And I want to continue to work and put my professional experience and expertise to good use here in Missoula, especially in War II, as we continue to grow and see so much growth and development. So I hope that my commitment to Missoula and War II will earn me your vote and your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sam?
Thanks again to everybody who came tonight and is watching online. This is a really important conversation we're having. The point of government is to represent the will of the people. And that's true, even if that will might be contrary to, you know, what I think, my opinions. I'm here to work with folks and to listen and to meet them where they're at. For me, I'm a pretty social person. I feel like that'll come easily to me. I enjoy listening to people and putting their ideas into action. Missoula is in the process of turning a new leaf and there's a huge enthusiasm right now that I'm finding for accessible and relatable representation, especially for representation that's personally impacted by the outcomes of a lot of these decisions. We don't want our important decisions being made from a distance where the, the effects won't be fully felt personally by the representatives. You know, after knocking and talking to all these folks around town, and I'm going to keep knocking, I'm not done, don't take it like that. I'm finding that there's a huge appetite for change. People want changes that will have positive effects in terms of affordable housing. People want changes in how we're managing homelessness. And regardless of how those changes take place, they want them. And people also want big changes in the responsiveness of government and how available our representatives are to listen. And that's hard because you only got so much time, but I think we can do a lot better. I've got the energy, the enthusiasm and the time and the attitude to deliver all that. So I really appreciate all of the voters' consideration of me when your ballots come in the mail coming soon here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Gwen?
So I was first elected in 2015 and have served two terms. If I'm reelected, I'll be the longest serving person on council. 10, 20 years ago, people would do 16 years of service. Eight years seems like a long time now because we are living in such a busy, busy era. So much is going on. But what I've seen is Missoula has been extremely proactive for the last eight years and longer. We had a very good mayor, which if, whether or not you agreed with him, he was very smart. He had an incredible social network across Missoula. He knew how to get things done and how to work with people. And because of that, we're well positioned as we are in a very difficult time. In terms of housing, we have a housing policy. We have an affordable housing trust fund that we set up several years ago before the pandemic hit. And then our housing market blew up with the pandemic. We have a robust Missoula redevelopment agency that is turning more and more towards using its impact and its resources on housing as they are figuring out what Montana state law has now opened the door on some new tools. They're realigning their, their focus. We are lucky to be in this position in Missoula, in, in the state of Montana, because I can tell you, most cities in Montana, if not all, are not, they do not have the foundation that we've created. We have so much more still to do, but we have some tools at our disposal, thank heavens. One thing that hasn't really come up tonight either that I wanted to touch on is climate. Housing is super important, so is climate. And again, so much more we need to be doing, but we have done numerous things to lay the foundation and we have positioned ourselves so that we have, we're going to be able to go for a lot of the Inflation Reduction Act monies. Not only because we'll have people writing grants, but we've got the policies in place on the ground that will help us get those grants.
Thank you. And Sierra?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you everyone for coming out. And if you're on MCAT, you're still hanging on there. Good for you. I will say, when I first was appointed onto council, I really thought I would just serve for the one year and, and that would be it. But I quickly learned that it takes a lot of time to really understand what's happening on council. And I finally feel like I have that momentum and I finally understand what the job entails. And so I want to keep serving for two more years. And I think that with this new administration, we really need a stable city council. We have to have people that are stable and understand what's happening. And I think that I provide that. I also, I think that what's unique about our council is it is very large. And I think it's really important to have a vast perspective on councils so that it's truly representative of Missoula. And I think that that is something that I also bring to council is I am a working mom. I am struggling just like everyone else in this community. I'm also a renter. I am, I understand the struggles that you are going through. And so I want to represent you on council that way. I also have been, I've worked in the private sector, I've worked in the public sector, I've worked for small businesses. I think that I do provide a really unique perspective so that we can continue to grow Missoula. I'm invested in this community. And I don't plan on going anywhere. I grew up here. And I think that I want to see Missoula retain its character and its spirit, but also grow in a really sustainable and inclusive way. And I hope that I can continue to do that for two more years. So thank you.
Thank you. And Tim?
Thank you. Yes, through the neighborhood committee, I have worked with the neighborhood for the last year for the north side and west side neighborhoods. And so we've helped to recognize a lot of those issues and bring them up to the city forum. I've represented the city forum, sitting here at this table for the last 12 months. And so recognizing those issues and address those cities, those issues within the neighborhood and supporting those, some 9,000 constituents over there. Moving on to the next level city council is just a natural progression for that. Myself, I do see concerns across Missoula as far as with the traffic and with the traffic flow. Many of us have experienced light turning green and we just don't move. We don't get to go forward because the next light's still red. So things like synchronizing those lights throughout the city and moving traffic and get it moving because traffic that's sitting is just sitting there idling and creating more emissions for everybody else. And that is not helping with our green plan as well. The homeless situation in the city is something that we've tried to address, will continue to try to address. But the, the, the issue is much larger than Missoula itself. It's a county issue, it's a state issue, it's a national issue. We're not the only ones having issues with homeless. As far as the future, I've already been helping my community. I worked this summer with the garden over at Lowell Elementary. And my daughter was over there working some of her scout projects. I worked building a greenhouse at Sentinel High School. We put a couple fences in at the Fort Missoula and some display cases at the history, the military history museum over at the fort. So I've done a lot for the city and I have a lot of time to continue to give and a lot of experience and a lot of experiences to give back to the city. Thank you.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the people of Missoula, I want to thank you all for stepping up and giving your time and energy to run for office. I run for office and I know the work that you're putting in over and above everything else that you're doing. And we're grateful for you to do that. November 7th is Election Day. This will be an all mail-in election. Ballots will be mailed out today to voters. Ballots must be returned, may be returned using the postage page envelope or in person to the Missoula County Elections Office. Ballots must be received at the Missoula County Elections Office by Election Day, November 7th, no later than 8:00 PM. So make sure you cast your vote early, enough to arrive by then. Also, ballots may be returned to any of the six ballot drop-off sites. And you can find those at the Missoula County Elections Office webpage. You must be registered to vote and be listed as an active voter on the registration rolls to receive a ballot. You can check your registration information at the My Voter page on the Montana Secretary of State's election website. If you are not registered to vote, we recommend the Secretary of State's website, sosmt.gov, and you will find all the information you need to register under the Elections tab. Alternatively, you can roll, you can call or visit the Missoula County Elections Office at 140 North Russell Street. The Elections Office phone number is 406-258-4751. Another great way to make your voice heard and shape the future of our community is to join your local neighborhood council. Visit the Missoula Neighborhoods webpage at missoula-neighborhoods.org or contact Kalina Pritchard with the Neighborhoods Office for information. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, Missoula League of Women Voters, thank you for joining us this evening. Be sure to join us tomorrow night at 7 o'clock for a forum involving the candidates for mayor and on Tuesday, October 24th, for the candidates in wards four and six. Remember, your vote counts. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.